10th, 2017. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to your very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio and to the National Film Board for the images of our country, and probably Microsoft for that alert sound. We will move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, the meeting from July 26th. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the city Grand Prairie meeting held June 26th, 2017 be approved.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions, anything that we need to correct in that set of minutes before we formally adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Any changes? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. We do have a number of public hearings on tonight, and so if there was somebody that was here tonight to speak to one of those public hearing matters, you'll have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing. So is there anybody that was here to speak to anything other than public hearing matters? I don't see anybody coming forward, so with that, we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. We'll move right into those public hearings that everybody's waiting for, especially this one. I'll call to order the public hearing for Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-74. I'm sure this is what's brought up most of the crowd. I'll look to administration for an introduction.
Good evening. The planning and development departments, 2016 and 2017 business plans identify performing regular housekeeping amendment as one of their goals. As a result, the first list of the housekeeping amendment was adopted by council in September 2016. In December 2017, another housekeeping item was adopted by council. The adopted housekeeping items covered, among other issues, expanding some of the definitions of the land use parlor and clarifying some of the land use parlor sections. The proposed amendment, C-1260-74, is the third round of the housekeeping items and the first for 2017. As mentioned before, the two previous ones were done and adopted in 2016. As for the subject amendment we have tonight, it's about reinstating the setback provision for accessory buildings or structures measuring 20 square meters or more. And I'm actually, we have the actual provision here. It's just about, it's about the accessory building or structure measuring 20 square meters or greater must maintain a minimum side yard and area yard setback of 1.2 meters from the wall to the property line. It should be mentioned that the development officers have been administering development permits as well as municipal compliance certificates, consistent with the previously acquired provision that was deleted, even though the enabling provision was deleted. However, it should be cautioned that such an approach cannot continue for long because it could be contested or challenged by applicants. The proposed amendment is very technical in nature, and it does not include any new policy directions. As a result, administration is recommending the approval of the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Lockberry. Any questions for administration at this time? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question. I know you're just cleaning up your house. The structures, we always, most people know it's 1.2 meter, or most people in contracting. When you look at like a shed or something, we extend it from 10, 10 meters square to 20, 200 square feet. Okay, so you're just kind of adding that to, because structures were pretty well-known. If you built a structure, you had to be 1.2 meter from your line. Am I true, or are you just adding that in? Because I had structures too, so what else is structures when we're just talking sheds? What do you mean by structures? Overall, just putting it all together?
Lee.
As you, Mr. Mayor, it basically means the same, but just in case, to cover any potential misunderstanding.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor McLean. Councillor Rice, are you ready there?
What I'm, what I'm understanding is, we had it in. We did some amendments, and somehow it got deleted, and we're just putting it back.
Is that correct?
So you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Tarrant?
So, has this bylaw provision been fought, being followed over the last, between the last revision and this time? Like, has this, this provision been adhered to, or is it, has there been an, have we been following the 20-meter greater required, the setback rule?
So you, Mr. Mayor, we are talking about 1.2 meter setback for accessory buildings that are 20 square meters or more. So the setback is 1.2, and yes, our development officer, even though the, the provision was deleted as an oversight, has been consistent in applying it, be it for a development permit or for a municipal compliance certificate.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Tarrant. I don't see any other, oh, one more question for administration. Councillor McLean?
Mayor Given, just looking for a clarification. You said "or more." I mean, structures, if you're building, you're getting development permit, you're going to get a building permit for a garage, or if you're doing concrete, it's not supposed to be more. It's supposed to be 200 square feet, supposed to be a shed. You're not supposed to build, you're allowed up to 200 square feet, and that's it, that or less, not more. So I don't know where you're going to be getting the greater at.
As, so you, Mr. Mayor, if I understood the question correctly, we are talking about a shed, an accessory building or structure that is measuring 20 square meters, and accessory building or structure not attached to the building can be more than 20 square meter.
But that's structure, not a shed. Just, I want to clarify this. You're not supposed to create any bigger than a shed of 200 square feet. You're not supposed to have greater, it's supposed to be that or less in a shed. I see greater, so I don't know where they're going with the greater.
See administration conferring over there?
So you, Mr. Mayor, the provision that Councillor McLean is referring to is in, is not about residential. We're talking about residential here, so in a residential zone, you can have an accessory building more than 20 square meters.
In residential? Commercial? Okay. All right, that's clarified. That's what I'm, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. So I don't see any other questions in the queue, and so we'll open up the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Was there anybody here tonight to speak to this public hearing? Well, maybe I was mistaken here. I would have thought this would be the one everybody came for. I'll ask again if there's anybody else that was here to speak to this public hearing. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll ask council one last opportunity for any questions for administration before I close the public hearing. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising. Councillor Rice.
I move first reading of bylaw C-1260-74, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C-1260-74.
Thanks, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on second reading of this land use bylaw amendment? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that we have third reading of bylaw C-1260-74 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So I'll say this, probably, I'll probably end up saying it each time it comes up tonight, but this is a motion to have third and final reading here tonight at this council meeting. In order for this motion to pass and for us to move on to third reading, this motion would have to pass unanimously. If it does not pass unanimously, then it would come back at the subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. If that motion does carry unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Councillor Rice.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1260-74, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? I don't see anybody with their hands up or on the ring-in button, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That's all of the business for item 6.1. We'll move on to our public hearing under item 6.2, another land use bylaw amendment, this time land use bylaw amendment C-1260-73, proposed rezoning, RM1 and urban reserve to IG, general industrial. We'll look to administration. I'll call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So yes, bylaw amendment C-1260-73 is a proposed rezoning from URM, and the site also is RM1 to IG, so I'll give a little more context for that. First off, the location of the site is in the west of the city by the boundary with the county, about a quarter section south of the airport, in a predominantly industrial area. The reason why a portion of the area is RM1 and URM is because it was an existing zoning that occurred in the county, so the business is existing and the RM zoning was applied. However, the parcel did not correspond with what we saw as future road alignments, and so we requested that the applicant adjust the boundaries so that we would have greater certainty that we would be able to build those roads in the future, in the absence of an outline plan. So because it was an existing business, we did not request them, require them to submit an outline plan simply for this, because it would delay their purchase of the land, possibly a year or longer, and we wanted to make this a simple process. However, in the future, any further subdivision of this quarter section will require an outline plan. So, you know, the area is in the recently annexed part of the city. It is an existing truck and trailer repair business. The rezoning is simply to accommodate a subdivision. It is an existing business, and the rezoning and subdivision are both triggering events for city taxes, so this is the conditions of our annexation, where landowners maintain the county tax rate for a fixed number of years. This triggering event will change that property to receive city tax rates. So here's the context of the property. The subject site highlighted in orange is essentially surrounded by industrial uses. The area to the west is the Coen ASP in the county. It is all future industrial. The existing businesses there are also all industrial. In the area to the east, it is all future industrial. Currently, part of it is agricultural. The only other use is to the south of the rail tracks that is future residential use. So given this context, I feel that the use is very compatible with adjacent properties. Policy context, so all of our long-term planning documents refer to this area as industrial, so the intermunicipal development plan, the municipal development plan, as well as the west industrial ASP, I'll refer to it as industrial. You can see the land highlighted in pink on this map is future light industrial. So given that the area is intended for future industrial, this is an existing business, and all the surrounding lands are industrial, we support, administration supports this application, and we recommend that council give it all three readings. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any questions for administration at this stage? Councillor Rice.
Explain to me again why making this change would trigger them changing from our annexation agreement to city tax rules?
To the mayor. So it is the condition of the order in council that we received as part of the annexation that changes such as subdivision and rezonings would trigger city tax rates on newly annexed properties. This isn't a decision related that we made as part of this process.
Thank you.
Councillor Rice. Councillor McLean?
Ray, can you just speak to a little bit? They want to break a little bit off for a subdivision. Is that correct?
Thank you, to the mayor. The parcel was a leased area. That is the area zoned RM1. However, when they came in and discussed the application with engineering and planning, we looked at it, and we saw that it was a short distance away from where we would likely want future utility and road alignments, and given that there isn't an OP in place to ensure that those alignments will be given in the future, we wanted to make sure that the parcel would align adequately with these through this process, and so there'll be service agreements during the subdivision.
Just to finish off, I read in here, and I just can't find it somewhere, about MR, about monies, because I know before when things came into the city, it was spent with the county, so there was no money for MR or playgrounds. You're looking for 10%. City will take 10% of the land as municipal reserve. For this application, the municipal reserve will be deferred through the subdivision process, which will cause negotiations between the seller and the purchaser. So we're saying we want that 10%, or has it been spent yet?
Mr. Drosch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are saying that we will be seeking the 10%. That'll be determined through the outline plan phase. I included in the report to make everyone aware that we would be seeking it at the time, and so that council would know that we would be keeping the MR requirement on title during subdivision.
Okay, my final question, which I had two there. Do we know if there's money, because sometimes land that comes into the city, if there was anything developed, so was, this wasn't previously planned for a subdivision of an area. That's where I'm getting at.
Councillor McLean, are you asking, has the county previously taken MR dedication from this, from this area?
From this area, because we've known that before, where it came to the city, there was no money left, and so be it. Do we know if there's still money to be there?
Mr. Drosch?
Thank you, to the mayor. Given that this area was not ASP, and it wasn't a wholly subdivided quarter section, there doesn't appear to have been any MR taken that would have been determined through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Councillor McLean. I don't see any other questions for administration. So we will go on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Was there anybody here tonight that wished to speak to this proposed rezoning from RM1, rural light industrial and urban reserve to general industrial? Anyone who wished to speak to this tonight? I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll ask one last time. Is there anyone who wished to speak to this public hearing business? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-73, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. As with before, no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-73 at this meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So as with that previous one, last public hearing, this is a motion that must pass unanimously. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Finally, Mayor Given, thank you. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-73.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn.
Finally, Mayor Given, thank you. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-73.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Yeah. Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That handles item 6.2 in the associated public hearing. We'll move on to item 6.3, the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan Amendment, C-1015B, and Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-72. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a rezoning amendment, residential transition to direct control. Administration received an application to rezone four properties from residential transition to direct control. The subject properties are within the boundaries of the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan. The amendment to the ARP is required to change the future land use of the subject properties from medium-density residential to mixed-use, commercial and residential. The purpose of this amendment is to regularize an existing parking lot and add an additional lot to the parking lot. The additional lot currently contains a single-family dwelling. The combined area of the four properties is .56 hectares. Three of the lots are currently being used as a parking lot for the keg, and the fourth lot currently contains a single-detached dwelling. The owner intends to demolish the existing single-detached dwelling and expand the existing parking lot to provide additional parking for the keg. The surrounding area consists of commercial businesses to the south, including the keg, Mad Hatters, and the brewery, and Fast Gas, and residential properties to the, or to this, sorry, to the west. And the south consists of a large parking lot on either end of the block, and low-density residential between, and an apartment building, and a semi-detached dwelling, and three single-detached dwellings. The subject property falls within the boundaries of the College Park ARP adopted in 1999. The ARP is bound by Muscat CP Park to the east and 106th Street to the west. The majority of the planned area is residential with a strip of commercial along 100th Avenue. The future land use map within the ARP identifies the subject properties as medium-density residential. The proposed amendment would change the land use designation to mixed-use, commercial and residential. Other relevant policies in the College Park ARP include that all applications within this ARP area should be for direct-control districting, and that the applicant proposing rezoning should be required to hold an open house. In this case, it is proposed to be DC districting, and the applicant did hold an open house. Administration considers the proposal to be compatible with the immediate surrounding neighborhood. The commercial development is contained on the edge of the neighborhood at the entrance, and additional existing parking lot has been, the existing parking lot has been in place for more than 20 years, and administration observes that it has not introduced any land use compatibility into the neighborhood. Also note that two other maps have been included in the amendment, as they were illegible to read, and they were just replaced in order to be legible. The land use bylaw. The subject properties are currently zoned RT, residential transition. This land use district allows for multi-attached residential development up to a maximum of eight units. The RT district also accommodates minor low-density intense, low-intensity commercial uses such as bed-and-breakfast operations, residential conversions, and childcare facilities. In accordance with the College Park ARP, the applicant is proposing to rezone the parcels to direct control. The direct-control zoning provides, provides for site-specific development control. Currently, the existing parking lot is within a residential land use district. This rezoning will regularize the legally non-conforming use and provide for improved aesthetics for the parking lot when it's expanded. While there's noted the rezoning will result in a loss of opportunity for higher density residential, the commercial businesses to the south will benefit by being provided with additional parking for customers. The applicant is requesting to amend the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan and the land use bylaw. The change in land use designation would regularize the existing parking lot and allow for his, for its expansion. Administration recommends that council give bylaw C-1015B and bylaw C-1260-72 three readings. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration? Councillor McLean?
Thanks a lot, Mayor Given. Allison, just quick questions. The keg where it sits now, it's kind of an outdated map, but you went, there's a house beside it. Is that area in front of 100 Ave? Is that direct control now? Is that separate from the college area redevelopment plan? Where it's sitting now, we have the keg and the house. I know we're speaking to the north side. I'm speaking to the east side. There's no longer a house there, and that's going to be parking as well. What is that area? Is that direct control in that area already?
Thank you. That area was already designated as commercial in the area redevelopment plan and zoned for parking lot use, so all that was required to demolish that house and put the parking lot in was a development permit, and they obtained that to add parking on that site. The lots to the north of that were zoned residential, and that's why a rezoning is required.
Okay, my final question is, we only have like two regular houses left in this area, between 101 and 100th. Am I correct? Because I don't know if there's an apartment building and maybe a fourplex. Administration look at anything on this whole block? Because really, it's kind of separate now from the college. You say it's part of the college, but it's a totally different apparatus now. Beast happening here, and we're saying it's going to ease parking, but I know 101st, 102nd are full, so maybe it might ease a bit on 102nd. When the keg is full, it's full. So do we look at anything in that whole area, like from 106th to 105th, from 100 Ave to 101st Ave? Because then we only got like two houses, and you're calling that residential. I mean, yeah, there's apartment building, but average houses. Do we look at that at all, administration?
Councillor McLean, can you clarify your question?
My question is, we're just looking at one area, but this whole block area, and I just said the Aves and the streets, is pretty well mostly commercial and apartment building. We got two houses left. So do we look into the future to say, if something happens to these two houses, there's going to be parking, or do we look outside the scope?
Sure. So I suspect that this application was, was driven specifically by landowner request, the owner of those properties, so administration didn't do a review of the overall College Park Area Redevelopment Plan?
That's what I was wondering, and to require one that I heard from administration to relieve parking, I say to someone, percentage of how many, how many stalls you can put in one house, because I know 102nd, 101st are full, even when they park on the south side of the drive.
So do you have a question, Councillor McLean?
Well, my question is, how much is going to relieve parking? How much do they think? I'm hearing it's going to relieve parking and be great, so how many stalls?
So, how many stalls? That's, that's a question, Ms. Downing?
Thank you. We haven't received the development permit application yet, and we don't have the final concept for the site. I, I would not want to estimate on the number of parking stalls, however, the applicant may have that information.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Councillor McLean. Any other questions for administration at this stage? I don't see anybody else. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Ms. Downing, when the parking lot is built, currently there's a fence that's blocking it off. Are we, have we talked with the landowner that once they develop the extension to the parking lot, that that'll be fenced and foliage to city standards?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you. As it's a direct-control district, we wrote into the district that the full fencing is required, as well as more landscaping and islands than is there previously, and the only access to the parking lot is going to be from the alley, so no access onto 101 Ave from the parking lot.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just wondering about the move to go to direct control. Why was there not a zoning that would be appropriate for this current mix? What was the impetus to go to direct control?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The College Park Area Redevelopment Plan actually specifies that any rezonings within their, that district should be rezoned to direct control. There was other advantages as well, as the city could anticipate exactly what the use would be, and ensure that it was compatible and, and didn't become something of an intensity that wouldn't be appropriate next to the commercial, or the residential development to the north.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we will open up the presentation.
That area was already designated as commercial in the area redevelopment plan and zoned for parking lot use. So all that was required to demolish that house and put the parking lot in was a development permit, and they obtained that to add parking on that site. The lots to the north of that were zoned residential, and that's why rezoning is required.
Okay, my final question is, we only have like two regular houses left in this area. If between 101 and 100th, am I correct? Because I don't know if there's an apartment building and maybe a fourplex. Did administration look at anything on this whole block? Because really, it's kind of separate now from the college. You say it's part of the college, but it's a totally different apparatus now, beast happening here. And we're saying it's going to ease parking, but I know 101st, 102nd are full, so maybe it might ease a bit on 102nd. When the keg is full, it's full. So did we look at anything in that whole area? Like from 106th to 105th, from 100th Ave to 101st Ave? Because then we only got like two houses, and you're calling that residential. I mean, yeah, there's apartment building, but average houses. Did we look at that at all, administration?
Councilor McLean, can you clarify your question?
My question is, we're just looking at one area, but this whole block area, and I just said the Aves and the streets, is pretty well mostly commercial and apartment building. We've got two houses left. So did we look into the future to say, if something happens to these two houses, there's going to be parking, or do we look outside the scope?
So I suspect that this application was driven specifically by landowner request, the owner of those properties. So administration didn't do a review of the overall College Park Area Redevelopment Plan?
That's what I was wondering. And to require one that I heard from administration to relieve parking, I say to someone. Percentage of how many stalls you can put in one house? Because I know 102nd, 101st are full, even when they park on the south side of the...
So do you have a question, Councilor McLean?
Well, my question is, how much is going to relieve parking? How much do they think? I'm hearing it's going to relieve parking and be great. So how many stalls?
How many stalls? That's a question, Ms. Downing.
Thank you. We haven't received the development permit application yet, and we don't have the final concept for the site. I would not want to estimate on the number of parking stalls, however, the applicant may have that information.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Councilor McLean. Any other questions for administration at this stage? I don't see anybody else with... Councilor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Ms. Downing, when the parking lot is built, currently, there's a fence that's blocking it off. Are we... Have we talked with the landowner that once they develop the extension to the parking lot, that that'll be fenced and foliage to city standards?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you. As it's a direct-control district, we wrote into the district that the full fencing is required, as well as more landscaping and islands than is there previously, and the only access to the parking lot is going to be from the alley. So no access onto 101 Ave from the parking lot.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Councilor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just wondering about the move to go to direct-control. Why was there not a zoning that would be appropriate for this current mix? What was the impetus to go to direct-control?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The College Park Area Redevelopment Plan actually specifies that any rezonings within that district should be rezoned to direct-control. There was other advantages as well, as the city could anticipate exactly what the use would be and ensure that it was compatible and didn't become something of an intensity that wouldn't be appropriate next to the residential development to the north.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we will open up the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. So this is the opportunity where anybody who wanted to speak to this issue would come forward. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Sure. Like to come forward? Welcome, just introduce yourself for our recording secretary, and have one of the mics sort of pointed towards your mouth there, and it should pick you up. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilors. I'm here to support. I am the single-dwelling homeowner there. So right now, I'm working with the adjacent keg owners on their parking lot. Again, I'm here to... in favor of it, and here to take any questions.
And I'll just ask you to make sure that you state your name for...
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Patrone.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
So an adjacent landowner, and here to speak in support of the application.
Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Patrone? I see Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A quick question, do you know who was notified? Since you're the homeowner of the land of that area, was the neighbors notified across the whole college area?
Yeah, we did in the open house. I'm not quite sure. I left that up to Allison in terms of the mail-out. So we got the proper coverage. Again, I don't know specifically as to how many blocks out that went, but the open house was held on June the 27th. Received one gentleman to show up to it, who was in favor of it as well.
Thanks very much, thanks, Councilor McLean. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else ringing in. Thanks very much, Mr. Patrone, for being here. Was there anybody else that wished to speak to this application, this rezoning? Is there anyone else who wished to speak in favor or in opposition to this proposed rezoning in the College Park area? This will be the last opportunity for any public comment. If there's anybody else that wanted to speak, this will be your opportunity. Okay, seeing nobody coming forward, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. Can I get a motion on business arising from this public hearing? Councilor Thieson.
I'd move first reading. I'm sorry, I just was scouring, my bad. I would move first reading of bylaw... Sorry, I would move first reading of bylaw C-1015B being a bylaw to amend the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Certainly, we have two different things that we'll need to amend to make this effect, but we have no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote, please vote. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move second reading to bylaw C-1015B.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the amendment to the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan? Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. One that the individual couldn't answer that came up and spoke in favor of it. I didn't see usually when you have this, where you mailed out and who was involved, and I didn't see it in the package, and I don't know. The area redevelopment plan is a big area, the college area. Was everybody notified, or was it just the neighbors to this lot? So that's kind of a question. I don't know if anybody could have answered it, but it would have been... Usually, we have it in the plan, but we didn't have it here.
Ms. Downing, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Given. In the stakeholder engagement section of the report, it speaks to the mail-out that we did, and we mailed out to 32 residents. And the open house was held by the applicant. However, we included their invitation in the mail-out to the 32 residents. And there's a questionnaire also attached as an attachment for the two people that came to the open house. And we received one phone call from somebody who initially was opposed to it, but after a conversation indicated that she felt that it wasn't an impact to her.
Thank you, thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any other questions? Sorry, any other discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move to have third reading for bylaw C-1015B at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. You've heard it before, this is one of those ones where in order for it to pass and for us to move on to third and final reading, it must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does pass unanimously, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you very much. One more time, Mayor Given, I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1015B being a bylaw to amend the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of this land use... Sorry, of this amendment to the College Park Area Redevelopment Plan? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now, in order to actually make this change, we also need to amend the land use bylaw. Councilor Thieson, do you want to carry on with that?
Sure, why not? I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-72 being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. No discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-72.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on this bylaw to amend the land use bylaw? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you again. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-72 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Another motion to have third and final reading here tonight. Any discussion or debate as the merits of having third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, if we can have third and final reading, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third and final reading to bylaw C-1260-72 being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on this third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That handles all of our public hearing business. We have no items of unfinished business. We have no reports this evening, and so that'll take us into committee business. We'll start off with item 9.1, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting from June 22nd. Councilor O'Toole, I believe that was your meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting held Thursday, June 22nd, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any... I was on a roll there before with Councilor Thieson. Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole.
You're asking, you're forgiven.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole, anything you'd like to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, this was our very first meeting with Michelle LaRouche, our day-bar manager. She's also in charge of the administration of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee and all the applications. We had a... First of all, we had a review of the funding and the sport percentages, and at the start of the meeting, we had $15,123.34 left over from a budget of $42,500 at the beginning of the year, which leaves us $27,376.66 spent, which equals to 64.42% of the funds. We had awarded that particular meeting approximately $6,750 to different sports, and I can go over them with you. We had... In the beginning of the year, we've supported Alpine skiing, snowboard, figure skating, racquetball, biathlon, judo, basketball, football, dance, canoe polo, track and field, wrestling, lacrosse, cycling, freestyle skiing, swimming, wallyball, gymnastics, and mountain biking. We have one more meeting prior to the end of this year, and we have some scholarships to award. So we felt that with the allotted money left over, that we would have to make sure that we supported those scholarships. So our next meeting will be October 1st of this year, and we should probably drain the bank at that point in time.
Thanks very much.
Very much.
Councilor O'Toole. We'll move on to the Community Growth Committee. Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council approve the community growth minutes of June 27th, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing nothing, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes, Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We had a fairly lengthy meeting and a great crowd that day with youth coming from the Hillside School. We talked about the area, Hillside Area Revitalization Plan, and it was moved that administration will bring it back or, sorry, start with the drafting of the revitalization plan based on option two, and you can find that online if you're interested in it, and it'll come back to council for consideration at a further date. Other than that, we had some discussions on electronic signs, and that was really about it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. And we'll move on to the Community Living Committee Meeting from June 27th. Councilor Tarrant.
Mayor Given, I will move the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Tarrant. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we have to correct from that June 27th meeting? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Looking for one more council, thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Tarrant.
I have one item coming out of committee. I would move that council award $7,300 to the Neighborhood Enhancement Matching Grants for the Country Club Neighborhood Association and the Highland Park Neighborhood Association for the amounts outlined in the agenda there.
Thanks very much, Councilor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Anything else you want to highlight, Councilor Tarrant?
We just had a little discussion surrounding the matching grants and just in regards to the terminology. We call it a matching grant, but there's not really any specific requirement for, you know, a dollar-to-dollar match or even the equivalent gift-in-kind or labor amount. And so we just asked the administration to come back and maybe make some recommendations on, you know, do we change the name? Do we actually... Are we looking for a matching grant? And if we are, what capacity is that going to be? And if we aren't, then maybe we should look at changing the name to something that's a little more reflective of what we're actually offering.
Thanks, Councilor Tarrant. We'll move on to 9.4 in the Community Safety Committee Meeting. Councilor Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee Meeting held Tuesday, July 4th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate, any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we have to correct? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
We've got a little bit of business to take care of. It's just the season for roadwork, so I would... And other things. So I would move, the first being a tender on Bear Creek slope repair, and the recommendation is that council award tender T-51-552-17 to Deschamps Construction Limited in the amount of $311,187.50. Exclusive GST is the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. I'll just recognize Councilor Clayton.
Mayor Given, I just wanted to declare a conflict as I live in the Bear Creek area.
Thanks very much. So Councilor Clayton will declare conflict of interest as her home is in the area. She will leave council chambers. Go ahead, Councilor Thieson.
Right, now just a little background on this slope repair remediation. It is on the slope that is directly behind the Heritage Museum down in Musquesee Park. And recently, the slope started to fail. The failure of this triggered a need for geotechnical investigation, and the scope of work for this tender will include the remediation of the entire slope area, replacement of the retaining wall, and the replacement of a swale and stormwater infrastructure to help direct the waterway from the slope face at a higher points on 132nd and 116th Street.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the motion, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was at this committee today. I forgot to ask the question that I know within the city parks and that, because it falls right along the park. We have some homes that they bought over the years, and since they moved people out of the valley where it flooded, where if we know there might be a problem in the bankment, we would buy the homes. And I know there was a new home built right above this area. Now we have it collapsing. Do we know through administration, some of these areas that we have, are we being proactive of buying some of these lots where within the city, close to the park, to the Musquesee Park, where they can be empty or old, and it looks like they could fall down? Because I know there's a couple homes, one is brand-new, one isn't, and the ground has collapsed. So my question to administration is, are we being proactive buying some of these lots or say, don't rebuild here?
Dr. Vontae?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has currently a program that is called a Slope Repair and Monitoring Program. So we are actively monitoring about 15 different spots along the Bear Creek corridor. So there's active monitoring, and this site has been selected as a highest priority due to the potential compromise of the museum and other infrastructure. So we rank the different spots, and this is an ongoing program funded by council. And you will see other spots coming next year as well for the same type of repair and stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Glenn. I'm glad to hear from Director Ashwell on that. It's just that in this particular area, since no one knows that it was going to go down like this, there was a new home just built last year. So that's why I'm particularly on this interest. And if we're looking at other 15 areas, maybe we can widen it. Because I know there was a home built brand-new, so it might be fine. But we're going to put $300,000 to fix the bank. A new house was just built above it, and probably $400,000 at home. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Any other discussion or debate on the motion to recommend this tender? Approve this tender? Seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We can let Councilor Clayton know that she's welcome to come back in. And Councilor Thieson, if you'd like to take us to 9.4.2.
For sure. I'm going to give the background on this one a little bit beforehand because there's some shuffling of monies. But the next motion is for the Pete Eager Fire Station, and it's actually touching on Phase 2 of the Road Rehab and Drainage Improvements of the whole scope of the project. So the funding that we're going to manipulate around in here is existing funds that aren't going to cost extra despite the fact that the, I guess, the project is going a little bit higher over budget than we had assumed, but it's all falling within that. The scope of this work for the Road Rehab and Drainage will involve the removal and replacement of existing asphalt, the removal and replacement of some concrete sidewalks, new concretes, curbs, and swale, and drainage improvement and landscaping to the Pete Eager Fire Hall. So in saying that, this is just to improve the drainage course of the Pete Eager Fire Hall Station, make it a safer place to walk to and from, and we have one more phase to go after this. So in that, administration has found a way to achieve the funds and not put us over budget. So in that, I have three recommendations coming forward. So I will move first that council approve the reallocation of $216,856 from the North Fire Hall Concrete Floor Replacement, project number 23561, to the Road Rehab and Apron at Pete Eager Fire Station Project.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Open for discussion or debate, Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just for those who weren't at the meeting, I asked the question about reallocating funds. It's not that the fire hall that they're taking the funds from won't need them. It's just it won't affect this budget, but on the next budget, it may affect it, most likely will.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on this first of three motions related to this project. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the reallocation of $11,452.85 from the Future Expenditure Reserve to the Road Rehab and Apron at Pete Eager Fire Station Project.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on this portion of the motions related to the Pete Eager Fire Station Project? Seeing none, again, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Thieson.
Finally, thank you, Mayor Given, for the overall project. I would move that council award tender T-42-552-17 to Wapiti Gravel Suppliers for the Pete Eager Fire Hall Road Rehab and Drainage Improvements, Phase 2, in the amount of $460,325.85, excluding GST is the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that final motion? Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Not to rehash old news, but in this fire hall, we've had water problems continuous over the last few years. So I'm hoping that we might finally figured it out, and it's going to be good for many, many years. But if we look back, a couple councils, maybe, there was mold and everything that came into this area, and there was a lot of money spent. Now we've got $400,000. So hopefully our engineers and everybody's really on top of this fire hall.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Would note that the $400,000 includes a significant amount of paving. There is some additional work around drainage, but in terms of the scope of work, I wouldn't say that that's the majority of the cost. A significant amount of the cost is actually the concrete work and the pavings. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Moving right along. Now we're talking traffic signals and signal repair and replacement. So to that extent, I would move that council approve the reallocation of $50,000 from the Roads Resurfacing Crack Repair Program of 2016 to the Traffic Signals Repair and Replacement Program. Just speaking to this motion very briefly, $50,000 is what was needed to make up the final amount, and we had this overall as funding that was unallocated in 2016. So it's not going to affect or hurt our budget at all to make these changes to our budget.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on the motion for the reallocation. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council award tender T-42-552-17, the 2017 and 2018 Traffic Signal Repair and Replacement to Can West Electrical Contractors Limited in the amount of $578,214 excluding GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. And this is just repair and replacement of four intersections, the first being 132nd Avenue and 116th Street, 84th Avenue and 100th Street is the second, 84th Avenue and Patterson Drive being the third, and 84th Avenue and Resources Road. Administration undertook non-destructive testing of all the city's traffic signals, and through discussion, these were the ones that were top priority.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, this was brought up quite a bit, but some of these intersections are very crucial for pedestrian thoroughway. And I don't know, I asked administration, I think all we had was for timers was in the downtown area, but some of these intersections are very well trafficked of children, and the speeds, it's quite a long way. So I'm just wondering through administration, are we looking past just downtown to have times on intersections for kids or people might know what they got?
Question for administration to countdown timers. Director Galante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. After our Community Safety Committee, when this matter has been brought to our attention, I instructed the traffic branch of the Engineering Department to analyze the intersection of 84th Avenue and 100th Street, and to develop a plan to install in the near future pedestrian countdowns. So pedestrians will be able to assess the full timing in order to cross the streets safely. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Galante. Thanks, Council McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on this motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thiessen, I think you've got one left.
Yeah, it was a busy meeting. I have a busy microphone right now. The last one is, last motion here is for 116th Street Overlay and Bridge Culvert Replacement Project, and the recommendation is that council award tender T-49-552-17, the 116th Street Overlay and Bridge Culvert to Rico Construction Limited in the amount of $605,523.46 excluding GST as the lowest qualified bidder meeting city specifications. And just to speak to this motion, this is 116th Street, as we're all aware, some roadways that we inherited through annexation and discussion, like from the county. The Bridge Culvert, the necessity of this was discussed thoroughly at committee meeting. There was questions asked on the need for it, and it is at the end of its shelf life. So replacing this now will save us a lot of headaches in the future. It's also to re-asphalt the area and make it drivable for the next five to 10 years.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen. Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is another one that's a thorn in the side. On 116th, we're going to fix it all nice for, I asked administration this one question, for semis to be able to go over this culvert, right? Is that correct, the first question? Like, it'll be built for semi-traffic?
That was asked at the committee meeting, and I can report that yes.
Okay, so, but yet, 116th will be no good for the city. We'll still get major traffic through our city. We okayed a $4 million line to move sewer from Clermont. We didn't have no attachment to say, let's have a road going down 116th, so we can move semis out from our city going in front of No Frills and traffic on 84th and down that way. So really, 116th, we're going to spend the money, but really, it's going to suck for moving semis, because they don't have a way to get in there and get them out of the city. So we're going to spend the money. It's nice, it's failing, but semis will hardly be using it in that area. That's a question for administration.
I think that's a statement, Council McLean.
No, I don't think it's a statement. Can semis turn on 116th off the correction line to go down there? Because right now, they're coming through our city with our children, going to Clermont mostly, and coming from Highway 40, MD Greenview area. Most of the trucks are coming through our city. It's not a statement. It's a question for administration to answer that. Can, right now, semis turn on the correction line and then be able to turn on 116th?
So the same question that you asked at committee?
Yep, but I'm asking it here.
Okay, sure. So Director Galante, can semis turn at the correction line on 116th Street?
My understanding is that turning radius is very limited right now at that intersection, depending the type of vehicle. Some trucks may be able to maneuver around that, and larger trucks, not.
Thank you, Director Galante. Thanks, Council McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thiessen, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Well, it was a busy meeting, and I think I've talked my way through this microphone, but I will state that there were three other things that came up and that were dealt with in that meeting. Most of it, the other two out of three items were on the Downtown Rehabilitation Project. First were Phases One and Two. We got a construction update at committee meeting. And then we received a presentation on the preliminary plans for Phases Three and Four through ISL and administration. Also, the mayor, yourself, Bill, presented a letter from Alberta Motor Transportation Association, talking about the transportation priorities list, specifically on Highway 43 and Highway 40.
Thanks very much, Council Thiessen. I think that then takes us to the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Council Radburn.
Mayor Given, I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, July 4th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing no one ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve a submission to the Electoral Boundaries Commission in support of the proposed urban Grand Prairie riding, and recommend the balance of the city of Grand Prairie be reflected in a constituency as indicated in Map One. So you have attached Map One, and you have maps showing that the draft, or the recommended boundaries as, I guess, presented by the commission. Commission is meeting again this summer to review and to receive further input. I believe they're coming to Grand Prairie on the 17th. So I guess committee felt that if we wanted to provide additional submission, we should move forward, bring it tonight, and depending on the will of council, that could be presented on July 17th. I guess the essence of the motion is twofold. One, to support the urban Grand Prairie riding that has been presented and recommended by the commission, but to change the rural-urban constituency somewhat to reflect Central Peace Notley moving more to the, I guess, to the north and east, and Grand Prairie Wapiti being our neighbor municipalities to the west. We thought this was, although committee wasn't unanimous in this, most felt that this made more sense in that we work quite regularly with municipalities to our west. As a matter of fact, we meet, I think, three times a year with that group, and thought that that was a little more logical description of a constituency than the one recommended initially. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Radburn. Open for discussion or debate? Questions, comments? Council Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting this motion. As I said in the prior discussion on this electoral boundaries, I truly believe that having two voices when representing our city at the legislature will always be better than one. And although I can appreciate the emphasis of one person solely dedicated to the urban riding, I still believe that when we have two people that have a voice on the urban area of the city of Grand Prairie, it's always in our favor. So I won't support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Any other discussion or debate? Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting it as well. I didn't support it committee, so it's not a shock to some of the committee members. Personally, I do believe when they do these reviews, it's every eight years to 16. I spoke at the last review. This one, I'm leaving for Quebec Sunday, so I can't speak to it. I'll go to wherever we say yes to here. I do believe as long as we don't fall trapped, 16 years, we get a second review, and we're overpopulated, and we have, we're thinking about our own, our neighbors and everything. That's great. A lot of these, the main issue is population, not about our buddies, our neighbors, and our buddies is population. And I do believe in eight years, we're going to meet that population for two urban ridings. We're not quite there yet, but I don't necessarily believe in the redirection of this area that where Beaver Lodge and that were notly. That's so under-populated. It's one of the two that they did from last year, and Cochrane was another one from Fort Murray, which Brian Jean is the representative of. I would much prefer where it was just a smaller area outside the city of farmland. And yes, to be a rural flavor, but it'd be majority city, because if we miss this boat, depending who's in government, it's in 16 years. So then we'll be back to where we're being, not as representative as we could be, and depending who's in government, because we can suggest this, and it's good. But at the end of the day, after what this panel does, it's going to go to cabinet, and they're going to make the changes they want. Thank you.
Thanks, Council McLean. Council Terren.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just want, I wasn't able to be at the committee meeting, so if I could get some clarification on the proposed ridings that we're looking to put forward. So I understand there's the urban riding, but it looks to me from the Map One there that there's three different rural ridings. Is that incorrect?
From the Map One, the best way to interpret it is really by color.
Okay.
And so, the yellow would be the Central Peace Notley, or whatever they choose to call that district. And then the pink would be the Grand Prairie Urban Rural District. And then the green, you know, sorry, the core green part would be the Grand Prairie Urban. So really, so that I know what, with showing Grand Prairie Wapiti, Grand Prairie Smoky, it can be confusing, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe that could be cleaned up in our submission. And just in terms of the, was there a rough population calculation done as to what should be, what the breakdown would be in each riding?
Mr. Olinger, I believe, would have that. Mr. Olinger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. To Council Terren, basically, in the way we mapped it out in Map One, Grand Prairie riding would have 46,343. Grand Prairie Smoky would be 40,760, and Central Peace Notley would be 33,517.
Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? I'm going to suggest that we may want to consider splitting the motion. There are two significantly, two distinct ideas captured in Council Radburn's motion. So I'm going to suggest that we split the motion to its two portions, the first being the city endorsing the recommendation that was put forward in the draft by the Boundaries Commission of establishing one fully urban constituency. So the first motion, so we'll vote on that portion first. From Council Radburn, that the city support the proposed fully urban Grand Prairie constituency. Any discussion or debate on that portion? The second portion deals with the disposition of the west county communities and where the city of Grand Prairie sees them fitting. So one is the urban only, and then the other one is what happens to that sort of, does the city have an opinion on what happens to that sort of west county area? So this first one is on the fully urban constituency. Any discussion or debate on that portion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. So we'll go to the second portion, which, as I stated before, has to do with the way that the west county communities, Wembley, Beaver Lodge, Heith, and Horse Lake First Nation, and whether or not the city of Grand Prairie takes a position that they should essentially be a part of the Grand Prairie urban rural constituency. Any discussion or debate on this point? Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. It's very crucial, I think, to look at the population on these reviews. And it wasn't quite looked in that way before the previous government for 40-some years, but do we really know where the population increases had been over the last 40 years in its cities and bigger towns? And that's what it should be based on, is population mode, not just, I'm friends here, I'm nice. The reason I'm going to speak against this is I'm in favor of what the board has did for the review for Beaver Lodge, Wembley, that area, under Cochrane. I'm against what they brought forward on to the east. So I was in favor of what the board did on the west, but not so much on the east. So I know this is a total reversal. So, yeah, so I will be voting against it.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. I will be voting in support of the motion. I would encourage my council colleagues to do the same. I think the city of Grand Prairie residents have much more in common with the communities of Wembley, Beaver Lodge, Sexmouth, Heith, and Horse Lake, in terms of economics and really things like the tri-municipal partnership that we're developing with county and the MD would be covered under this one MLA. The city of Grand Prairie will continue to have two MLAs that will need to represent the interests of city residents. And this does address what the commission suggested were some of their concerns with respect to trying to ensure that Central Peace Notley had some measure of population, that it didn't continue to get depopulated. And the inclusion of the communities of Alexander First Nation, Fox Creek, Valley View, Surgeon Lake, Ridge Valley de Bolt, up into Central Peace Notley will help the commission basically address one of those issues that they have. And most importantly, I think that this sort of approach is very important as we look to end out this council term and start the next council term, looking towards the negotiation of intermunicipal collaboration frameworks. I think it makes sense that an area that could conceivably be, you know, a party to intermunicipal collaboration frameworks amongst the partners, considering how many agreements we already have with many of these municipalities, they should be in a constituency with the presence of the city of Grand Prairie. So I'd encourage my council colleagues to support this motion. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. So, Council Radburn, any other?
Nothing else. That was a single-item agenda.
Okay. Thanks very much, Council Radburn. For single item, it generated a fair bit of discussion and debates. We had no items of correspondence this evening. We had no public delegations, and we have no notice of motion. And I think we only have one council member report from our external agencies, boards, and commissions. That's the Nighthawk Recreation Area Board, Council Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just quickly, we had an AGM and then plus a regular board meeting on June 28th. The new, the executive remains as it was last year. Angela Logan is president, Tom Watt is vice president, Nelson Winnie is treasurer, and Whitney Wild is secretary. We did pass some bylaw amendments at the AGM to reflect our present practices. We also approved a 2017-18 budget. And there was a discussion about the number of events that Nighthawk has a hand in. It's two-pageer now, so we're significantly engaging our broader community more and more and more. it was significantly engaging our broader community more and more and more. And finally, of note to my colleagues, we're planning, or Nighthawk is planning, a fun municipal golf challenge at our South Bear Creek Bear Paw Par Three Golf Course mid to late August. So we'll be in touch and hopefully we can have some fun with our partner neighbor municipalities and enjoy that new facility. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So we'll continue on with council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. You know, I really look forward to going to that golf course because I just took a little tour about it this last two weeks here. And it's looking really, really good. And I encourage the public to enjoy it as much as possible because it has been dormant for far too long. I'm actually just going to talk about two things that I did. It was a really busy couple of weeks, but really more or less a comment to our team at the city of Grand Prairie. The first being Municipal Government Day. I know under threat of storm and everything else, we moved it over to Revolution Place. I'd just like to really hand it to David, the team at Revolution Place, and for committee on Municipal Government Day. I'd like to single out Helen and Kevin O'Toole as well. Helen put together a really great Munio's Games that, you know, it was a little underattended than typically what it was, but we had to switch the plans from mini golf to carnival games. And it went over really, really well. Everyone was really, really happy. And kudos to Helen for being the hostess with the mostess. And also to Kevin O'Toole for being the host with the most because I got to watch a little bit of him emceeing on stage at the Tim Hicks Show, emceeing in Revolution Place. He was all over the place. I swear, he should have been wearing a green jacket and an Afro because he was everywhere like a wild man. And it looked like he was enjoying it and buoying the crowd's energy as well. So great job to our Municipal Government Day team and all the players involved. It was very, very impressive and I know our community left happy. Also, finally, I'd like to just comment on Canada Day. I was full around, part of all the festivities. And so another big shout out to our parks people, Carla, Nicole, and Chad down at Musquessee Park for once again putting on a flawless Canada Day parade and two days of festivals and fireworks. I had the opportunity to emcee for two days on main stage and was surrounded by kids, so I was in my glory. But one place where I wasn't in my glory actually was at the Canada Day Parade. And I got a comment. I'm going to mention, you might think I have a man crush right now, but Kevin O'Toole and Lauren Radburn, actually, these guys, they defy their age with their impressive ability to be able to move faster than myself on a bike and most vehicles in the parade. They actually outpaced our own float. And I think the float was trying to keep up with them as they like fired candy off to the kids. So hopefully when I get to that age, I'll be in as good a shape. Currently, I'm not in as good a shape as these two gentlemen who are about twenty-five years my senior at least. But yeah, good job to all involved on Canada Day. Way to go, my man crushes over there. It was a glorious three days of fun and excitement here in Grand Prairie to celebrate Canada's one fifty and Municipal Government Day and all that we do here for the citizens of our fair city. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just speak to a couple of things. I'll speak to Canada Parade since you brought it up. We ran out of candy halfway through. It was a very well toward the event. It was very hot. A lot of kids were out. I think that's the third time we ran out of candy in about seven years. So we've done okay, but let's watch the candy. We should be loaded up on the candy. It's Canada Day Parade. No, right from the echo it was one candy because we knew we were going to run out. So a couple of things I'll speak to is South Bear Creek grand opening. That I'm very proud of that. When I first got elected council, the area was falling apart. And it was something I was very glad to go to, get a picture in there. I know it's going to take another term to get that probably pretty close to being done before we look for other areas. And I'm very proud of the South Bear Creek Ball area. And ball players are happy. And also besides ball players, we're looking at concert, we're looking at winter events, the pavilion being redone. I mean, it's just awesome. You want to go there now before you avoided it. Another one is I'll speak to a couple of events I went to, not quite near city, but an individual did his East Coast Garden Party, did a Wild West Festival in Fort Murray. I was up there as a volunteer. And coming back, I hit Slave Lake where they had the West Coast amusement rides that the rodeo gets, the St. Pete, I guess. I've asked Counselor Rice before and on this, and I believe that the end of August or early September, all the work we're doing downtown, we should bring, well, we can, the Wild West Festival, we should bring the West Coast amusement rides to our downtown. I don't know how many years it's been we haven't had it. And I don't care what the reason why we lost it, but I believe we should. I actually was there and I went and spoke to the owners. So I do believe there's a chance for that next year for us to have a date. And I look forward to us maybe having discussions on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan.
Meant that his already old hat is with the Canada Day and celery celebrations. I was just blown away by the number and a variety of people engaged in the activities. There was a tremendous sense of community and camaraderie in the air with it. And I just want to congratulate all those that worked so hard to make a success of that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, just a quick kudos to all the city employees and council and people that were involved with the Municipal Government Days as well as Canada Day, record numbers of people. And the parade was huge. And in the park, I spent some time after the parade. And it was a great turnout as well. And I've heard nothing but positive things from Municipal Government Day to Canada Day. So that was great. I just briefly wanted to mention one other thing. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Spark Business Incubator in two fourteen place and Holly Sorgan and the Community Futures Group and the board and the volunteers and that have making this opportunity such a great success for small businesses and people who are looking to develop their business. There's still a little bit of room there. If anybody's looking for some support, definitely get a hold of Community Futures. But I think the future for that organization and what council did for a priority with this incubator is huge. So congratulations to everyone that was involved with that. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of things. I was able to attend the opening of the Alberta Summer Games offices here. It's great that we get to use an older vacant building we have that the city was able to donate to the organization. It's good to see the leisure center being put to good use. And it's great to see that they have quite a fantastic team put together over there and looking forward to everything that comes of it over the next year and seeing the fruition of all their efforts. The other thing I attended was the county of Grand Prairie had their State of the County address. And it's good to see we share a lot of the same concerns. And, you know, one of that, one particular highlight was the concerns around the electoral boundaries and just the dispersment of the different towns and villages and how they would be represented. And so I think we have common interest there. And I think we'll be speaking on the same page roughly when we get to present to the Electoral Boundaries Commission.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Radburn.
Mayor Given, just want to support Counselor McLean's comments relative to South Bear Creek Pavilion. Excellent facility. And it will really be a showcase as we continue to host provincial and national competitions there. The other thing I wanted to just mention is I attended along with Mayor Given and Counselor O'Toole, the Rugby Club's thirty-fifth anniversary. Mayor brought a proclamation. Yeah, we missed you, Mr. Rugby Player McLean. But we, they did some inductees. They honored some of their founders, so to speak. But Mayor Given asked a question during his presentation I thought was quite spot on. He asked about how many rugby players were from Mellesford, not maybe being lifelong or even in Grand Prairie for a long time. And most of them were new to our community. So I see rugby as a great activity for people to participate in, but also it is definitely helping make us even more inclusive and building community. So kudos to all those involved at the rugby club over the years.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just want to, once again, just say thank you to all the staff for Municipal Government Day. It was an event that brought a lot of our agencies down to the Revolution Place. It was very, very well attended. I think forty-one hundred hot dogs were served that night. And also it brought our, each our departments together. We had to work really close this year to make things happen in a short time. And I think we had a great respect for each other's department. And it worked out extremely well. So for that, I thank all of the city staff. I attended the fireworks and festivities at Musquesee Park. I actually sat on the north side of the reservoir. And at twelve o'clock, they played O'Canada. And my family always stands up. And when we stood up, it seemed like the entire field stood up as well as they played it. And it kind of made me feel really warm and fuzzy inside, knowing that there's still respect for our national anthem. And I think that's kudos to the citizens of Grand Prairie. And I did attend the regular game for the Grand Prairie Cricket Association on Sunday after attending the thirty-fifth anniversary for the Rugby Football Club. They were still on a high from beating Fort McMurray in the Fort McMurray Cup last weekend, July long weekend. And last year they come in second. This year they won it. And talk about diversity. There's people from just about every area of the continent playing for that team. And from people from South Africa to African and European nations. So there's two sports that have brought Grand Prairie closer together. So with that, I also have one more item I want to talk about. The Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum has a new director. Her name is Susan Hunter. She's got an extensive background in postsecretary, art gallery, and corporate management. And she will be a pivotal role in building and strengthening partnerships with the museum. We have our first meeting with the new board coming up this week, and I'll give you a report on that in the first meeting that we have in August, I think. This is our last for July, I'm thinking. And just to highlight, we've got lots of summer programs out at the Dinosaur Museum. Some of you may remember a fellow named Dr. Phil Bell. He's coming here on Saturday, July twenty-ninth to do a free lecture on the opal mines of Australia. And I'll be looking forward to that event myself. There's lots of things for the youth to do. There's lots of different camps that are heading out there. And yeah, it's being very well attended again this summer. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice.
I just very quickly touch on Municipal Government Day, an excellent event. I think it was one of the best ever, continues to improve each year. So kudos to everyone. And for the location, I attended the State of the County Luncheon Address, also the Business Incubator opening. The parade was absolutely phenomenal, a hundred and five entries. So and some excellent entries as well. Beautiful day for it as well. I attended the opening of the Alberta Summer Games office. Already they're very enthusiastic and ready to go. And I attended the Internal Stakeholders Workshop.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Well, so to be brief, I appreciate how busy the last few weeks have been. And a number of my council colleagues highlighted a number of different events. I will just speak to a couple. I was pleased to have the opportunity to meet with the Health Minister, Sarah Hoffman, when she was in Grand Prairie. It was a bit of a surprise visit. We received a call the day before asking if I would have some time to meet with her and certainly took that opportunity. We discussed the completion date of the hospital, still twenty nineteen. We discussed the Beaver Lodge, need for the Beaver Lodge Hospital. The minister said that they are continuing to work to deal with that. And then recognizing that the minister is also deputy premier, discussed with her the potential for degree granting status or polytechnic university status at Grand Prairie Regional College and a number of other items that are advocacy items to the city of Grand Prairie. And then the next day, I had two items that I think I was the only council member in attendance at. It was my pleasure to go down to Eastlake Center and see off our Grand Prairie contingent that was heading down to the Special Olympics Alberta Summer Games. They were traveling to the exact opposite end of the province, going down to southeast Alberta to go to Medicine Hat. But a fantastic team of about fifty-some athletes and coaches that were heading down to compete in about seven or eight different sports. And so appreciate the fact that we were able to host them at the Eastlake Center. And want to recognize the law enforcement community who are there putting on the barbecue for the athletes. There were sheriffs, RCMP, city and county peace officers all there to man the barbecue to help see them, see the athletes off. Later that day, I also stopped by the end of a golf tournament, didn't actually get to golf, but stopped by the end of a golf tournament for the Alberta Road Builders and Heavy Construction Association. This is an annual event where this provincial organization hosts a event in the Grand Prairie region for their members. In the past, I've gone, Counselor, or sorry, Reeve Boprey was there as well this year. And in the past, Reeve Gervais has gone. Had a good opportunity to sit with some of the contractors that are working on city construction projects. And just reiterate that I hope we have a great summer, lots of dry weather. And they said that they were seeing the same thing and were hopeful as well. But also had a chance to speak with the chair of the association's board and highlighted for him that their industry as a stakeholder association, or their industry association may want to take a position with the provincial government with respect to the continuance of the MSI program. Obviously, road builders are fairly significant beneficiaries of the construction projects that municipalities are able to do because of the MSI program. So I brought it to his attention that it would, you know, the government is doing sort of two years of consultation on what will replace MSI and suggested that their association may want to look into that a little bit more, see if they could partner with AUMA, because certainly they'll be able to speak to the impact of that in terms of actual infrastructure projects. And other than that, I think all the other project, events that I attended have mostly been reported on. So we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.